They're coloring.
Good evening, call this meeting to order, it's November twentieth and at six o'clock. As always, this meeting is being recorded. Uh, first up, we have a special use permit here in for a cannabis dispensary at four forty-two Broadway.
Public hearing will be held on Monday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Those finance municipal building at two fifty Broadway. For the purpose of special use permit for cannabis dispensary at four forty-two Broadway. All hearings are open to the public and publics, advocate comments, and accessible for the handicapped.
I feel a little bit more prepared this time compared to last meeting when we were here. Uh, my name is Nathan, my brother Nick, my other brother Ben. Uh, we're the Bloom Brothers, we operate an operational and compliant uh legal dispensary in Massachusetts in Pittsfield. Just over Murcher County and we are hopeful to operate a second location, our only other location at uh the former variety Walgreens building on uh four forty-two Broadway. Recently, the address was updated with site plan that was submitted, used to be four forty-four A. But uh, we're differentiating building from the current plaza that's in based on the new configuration. And that updated address will end up being four forty-two Broadway. Uh, for the special use permit requirements, uh, we've submitted a various few sets of plans that we'd like to go over with everybody just to kind of show you what our intentions for the building are. Um, we have been working with the uh local municipality, the building department, the police department, uh fire department, the mayor's office, Don uh Handerhand, uh the the village clerk, and everyone to make sure that our plans are as compliant as possible. Uh, and uh, as of today, we uh had all the building, we did close the building in August of uh twenty twenty-three. And uh pursuant to the uh special use permit guidelines, we'd like to hopefully answer any questions that anyone might have this evening. And uh, anything that we can do to make this permit process uh as quickly, uh quick and simple as possible, we're we're up for discussion anyway. So, um, page number one, what you see here is just an overall site plan. Uh, the portion that we uh have purchased, this is the building from the front, that's actually Broadway here at the front. Um, and uh, there's a total of fifty-one parking spaces that come with the building. There is a drive-through lane that does make a wrap around the building that will be used for drive-through service, which is allowed by the state of New York. Um, and I'm uh, as we continue just on the other portions of the plan. This is just another uh design and look, uh, there's a couple of right-of-ways, uh, just showing where the drive-through goes and allows people to come in. Uh, there are multiple curb cuts that already are uh already in location at the building. Uh, those curb cuts would remain, we're not adding any additional curb cuts, there's no additional service requirements on the red lights that are currently there from across the street at seven eighty-seven. I have been in touch with the New York State Department of uh Transportation as well. Uh, and they have no plans to make any adjustments to this intersection at this point in time, so they said to just leave it uh as it currently stands.
Yeah, there's some of the current site plans as it sits today, this is the new proposed ones. Mainly the difference is uh moving the handicap spaces around a little bit, still remaining any compliant. Um, and also just mentioning more to our property line and some additional landscaping that we're gonna be doing in the front of the building. Um, there's a small area of grass that um is currently there that we're gonna, you know, put some plantings in, we're also gonna try to add some landscaping onto the sidewalk areas as well, just to, you know, add some color to this uh area of uh Broadway.
What I did last week speak to the C D T A, there is a current existing bus stop that's on the location, it's experienced some vandalism um for quite some time. Uh, we are gonna have adequate camera coverage that's gonna cover that for the safety of all the pedestrians and passengers that use the bus line as well as the C D T A did give me permission to paint, go over the vandalism that's there, uh, I'm gonna work with them, obviously, I don't, I can't just go in and paint it. Uh, but they did say that we are more than welcome to maintain that bus stop, uh, just to make sure that it's, you know, being watched and 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 cared for.
Um, thanks, one last thing to mention on this plan too, uh, there was discussion about like storm wall. You know, multiple um manholes or tent basins that run through the parking lot currently and then enter stormwater drainage right at the front of the uh property right here as well, so we don't have really concerns about, you know, the stormwater and the thing.
Page number three is just uh some building modifications as far as what we're leaving behind versus what's to be demoed, this is just a typical outline drawing of the building, it's just four walls as it stands right now. Uh, there's very little to be demoed, this used to be the area where the fridge is and the refrigeration units were. Uh, for C V S, that that's all come out, uh, there used to be like a little security office here, so we're basically just taking it down to four walls so we can start a brand new construction project. Uh, which we anticipate will take between four and six months. Um, we have a contractor over there now, starting some of the approval demolition work, just so we can kind of get it down to its bare bones and see where we gotta work from from there. Uh, on additional page here, this is our building layout and our building design plan. Uh, and the building design and layout plan, uh, the building encompasses ten thousand two hundred square feet plus or minus. Um, where we're gonna use the pre-existing entrance location, we're gonna create a vestibule and the vestibule's purpose is uh for the safety of everybody that comes in and out of the store, this is the location where they will come in, they'll have their identification verified, making sure that you're over the age of twenty-one. Can't be an eighteen-year-old person or sixteen-year-old person and just walk into a dispensary, it's against the law. So, this reception area here, because people do travel uh to come to our store in Massachusetts and we know that they will travel in New York, we're gonna have two uh handicap accessible bathrooms here, men and women, there's gonna be a reception and a greeting area here, as well as plenty of space. Uh, we we had met uh uh Brian, the chief, uh, police chief down here, just to talk about capacities and how many people can be allowed in the store at any given time. Now, our store, as far as our architect has calculated, can have about fifty-five people at any given time, we don't ever foresee there being fifty-five people, but that's in addition to another eighteen people that could be inside of this uh reception area at a maximum capacity, so there were some concerns about potential lines forming, uh, if we are ever lucky enough to have seventy people waiting in line, um, it 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 just won't happen, it's never happened in Massachusetts, I've never seen a store that's ever had that amount of people because we are gonna have a setup for ten or nine.
Nine P O S stations and on top of that capacity of fifty-five people. Uh, we also have a drive-through lane that has been approved by the state um to allow drive-through, so we plan on pursuing that in a compliant manner. And through that drive-through, uh, just as it sits right now, you can fit about twelve cars in it with plenty of space, so on top of that capacity, with twelve additional cars being able to access the drive-through lane, we have no concerns from occupancy standpoint.
And everything that the the store portion, as you can see, the building's kind of cut into this quadrant here, this is actually the store floor, so we have a a flow of people, you would come in, you would have your I D checked here at the reception counter, you would then be allowed into the store. Through the reception counter has a buzzer, they let you in, you make your way in, and we would have it via a natural flow of traffic, you would come in. We have a lot of pop-ups that take place in our current store where a vendor will come out and be able to answer questions that you might have about product types, about items that you may just be curious about, uh, so this is gonna be a permanent area where we are gonna have a lot of uh vendor interactions. New York State, it plans on having about three or four hundred licensed cultivators and manufacturers when they open up the rec of rec market. We're trying to work with many of them as possible, especially those that have been justice involved, especially those that, you know, have have that come from economically disadvantaged areas, we've already made a lot of relationships upfront and all the relationships we have in mass. All of those that are working in New York, we're gonna carry over our our great relationships that we have in mass. So, just a great area for people, there'll be products on display, we sell some apparel, we sell all kinds of accessories and anything that has to do with um, the use of cannabis, and the flow will basically be, you'll you'll come in, you'll be able to come to any of the sales agents that'll be posted here uh, between nine and ten at any given time, on any time that we're open. We have a nice little seating area planned here too, where if you want to have a more intimate conversation, where maybe these individuals that are here can't answer the questions you have, we're prepared to sit down with anybody, whether it be one of our agents, one of us as owners, we have conversations every single day with people who are curious, you know, ultimately, they might be struggling with something else, we can't give medical advice, obviously, we're a recreational location, but we have gained a tremendous amount of knowledge and we share experience that other customers that shared with us ultimately. Um, and you're gonna then make your way out, so there's one way in and there's one way out of this uh property. And for safety of the uh consumers, it's for safety of the staff, it's for safety of everybody involved. But also, it's just because it's a common path, we don't necessarily want people crossing paths, once you have your product, I want you to be able to come out, come right to the sidewalk, right back into your vehicle and 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 on your way. Um, everything else though is just ancillary space, we have a drive-through area, we have some vault storage space, just some some issue uh locations that we uh store product, we we do a lot of uh pre-orders in our store now, so we have a pre-order filling room, we have a secondary pre-order filling room and a drive-through filling room. Uh, and we have uh backup inventory for for the most part. Uh, so, this is what will take about four to six months to put together.
Oh, before you go from that, um, uh, you were showing the one way in and one way out, um, you just showed one more time where the uh entrances and exits are.
Yeah, so the entrance is where the current entrance to the building is right now, there's no modifications to that. There is already a vestibule like right there, we already knocked those walls out. There's just gonna be one main door.
Okay.
The customer generally will go right from this entrance directly to the reception counter to present their I D, get verified. Um, and then they'll get buzzed in here, this is the entire sales floor, so over, you know, two thousand square feet in just the sales floor alone, which will fill it up too, um, after they go to the counters, uh, they get their products, then the exit, this is gonna be um, we're gonna have to blow out the wall in order to create this exit.
So that's, oh yeah, so we're uh that side with the uh the text on the the right there, that's the the parking lot then.
This is Broadway right here, so the parking lot's actually on this side of the building right here.
This is actually, this will be where the drive-through is on the backside of the building, so there's currently uh twelve to fifteen spaces out here, we're actually cutting that number down slightly because we're gonna build a bump out so we can delineate the drive-through, we don't just want people kind of tearing into the drive-through. There's gonna be a stopping point here where they're gonna have to get a verification, you do have a pre-order, we will only allow pre-orders in the drive-through, you can't just pull up an order, it's not gonna be donuts unfortunately, it's gonna have to be pre-order only. And these areas here, we plan on offering, people that come to the drive-through that do not have a pre-order, you can just pull into one of the pre-reserved parking spots, please ship pre-order, hop right back in line.
Is that doorway just gonna be an exit?
Oh, the exit, yep, it 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 actually won't have a doorknob on one side.
As there's parking over there as well, there's gonna have to be a mark out in the parking area so that nobody can park in front of that door.
There is actually a sidewalk.
There's a cute sidewalk there.
Well, it it won't matter, there's there's gonna be people popping out that door, there's gonna have to be one space that's, you know.
It is actually currently three spaces because there's two handicap there with a lined uh spot, we're lining up where the line spot is directly in front of the door, just based on the layout.
Yeah, so it's marked out so nobody can park in front of the door.
It is marked, no parking, I'm actually looking, uh, I I can give you this here. Do uh, should you have the smaller plan so you can kind of see where the reference point is, it actually lines up right at that, the Mars is space right there, and then there's a couple of handicap spaces in there as well, I can give you guys those plans if you want. Um, yeah, it does line up so that no one is allowed to park in front of that door from from that capacity. And the the sidewalk is fifty-four inches and we're actually making some slight adjustments because the A D A, the sidewalk has fallen over the years, just a little bit away from the building, so we're back hammering out some of it so we can create the appropriate slope, B A D and come uh compliant.
Oh, well, the next one is just like building elevation type stuff, so.
I think there was a, was there a picture of the logo on there too?
Oh, like the sign, yeah, I don't think there really was sign. This one kind of shows.
Yep, so from the front side of the building too, what our intention is with the signage, uh, where the old Walgreens locations were, the it's up on the parapet, we've actually painted uh the parapet already to look like two different colors so you can kind of get a good idea of what the building is, uh, that's what these lines actually mean. We're putting uh just our logo, simple, it doesn't say anything like cannabis dispensary in huge letters or anything like that, it just has a Bloom Brothers logo on one side, Bloom Brothers logo on the other side, that'll meet the signage requirements, uh, Wile sent us the documentation uh, for what we have and we we gave back the filled-out application of what we intend to file if the special use permit is granted for the signage.
Um, yeah, for the signage rules that the state set, they're stricter than what the village even requires. So, these are gonna be the only two signs on the building that feature our logo. There will be signs throughout the parking lot like drive-through for instance, and our hours of operation will be on the front door, but we're not gonna be plastering, you know, dispensary, cannabis, this and that. Uh, we wanna make it a very comfortable place, uh, where any type of person feels comfortable coming there. And um, we've seen some dispensaries that do do that, and that's just not really the vibe that we're going for. Uh, we don't want the community to feel like we're trying to bring in, you know, cannabis, we're trying to bring in a well-renowned, you know, well-run business.
And where where you see here, so there is actually black windows right now, I don't know if you know the building at all, there's a bunch of black windows. We are actually breaking them in, uh, so we are gonna be eliminating those windows because those windows could create a safe, a sightline for an individual to be able to see into the dispenser, although it would only look into our reception area. We have found a brick match, uh, pretty pretty close to what's on the building right now, so we're gonna tuck, we're gonna knock this out, we're gonna frame it in, and we're gonna brick match it. Um, and we heard the design up to where the exit door is gonna be, and those doors are are flat steel, it's not glass or anything like that, it's a security door, and on the other side, which we submitted in our plans to Wile, um, we are also gonna fill in the black glass here and we're gonna cut new windows uh eighty-four inches height off the ground so that we can have just some natural light into the store. Uh, you'd have to be seven feet tall to see the base of the sill, uh, it's pretty unlikely. Um, but uh, those sit at eighty-four inches and there will be three cutouts right here. And then where the current door configuration is, that will have fake windows, they're gonna look real but they are gonna be fake, and then two steel doors that will ultimately be able to be openly exposed through a handicap accessible button on the inside. Um, that's controlled by the reception individual, we work with the reception. Yep, yep, these are just material and and what's needed, um, from a fire, fire safety perspective, uh, we did uh send this over to the fire chief. Uh, at the time, the fire chief said that he would review them and he would get back to us, but she has not gotten back to us. So, yeah, it's.
Any concerns?
Uh, I haven't received any.
He's the fire chief.
Okay, um, I just found the one that was on the website. Okay, sure, that sounds perfect.
We'll get it over to you.
Yeah. Perfect, perfect.
Or if you want, Nate, just email me and I'll.
Yep, we can definitely do it, um, and we did have a chance to uh meet with uh uh the police chief down here just to talk about any potential concerns. Um, and we we, you know, we're we're happy to address anything that has to be addressed and and give guys anything you need. Uh, so, can't wait to hopefully do business with you guys, so.
Alright, so now we're gonna open it up to the public question.
Perfect, yeah, so.
Any questions from the public?
Go ahead.
Are one of the three of you, will you be managing the store?
So, at the beginning, we're definitely gonna be uh very involved, uh, to train up, you know, our management to gain the operational expertise. Um, our store in Pittsfield, uh, we're a little more local to that, but one of us is there almost on a daily basis. We plan to start this business in a very similar manner where one of us will be present, you know, during the beginning stages of it for sure. Um, the goal with this one is to, you know, train management to take over some of the tasks that we still find ourselves doing after four years, which we feel is almost better for the store for our presence to kind of back off over time. Um, but at the beginning stages, we're we're definitely gonna be very.
Last meeting, you talked about kind of call law enforcement, what were the calls for?
None of them were related to incidents with us, we actually are right next to a pretty busy road that like accidents will happen at often, and we have cameras that view the road. Um, it was mainly looking up license plates, informations for that type of stuff. We've actually never had an incident in the store, um, that required like law enforcement to come respond, like no burglary attempts or anything with the advanced security system we put into place uh, along with our cash management procedures as well, we use uh like cash machines you'll see in a bank. So, there's never like cash being exposed in front of customers or anything. Uh, with all those measures that we put in place, we've never had an incident uh in terms of like unruly people on premises. It's uh always related to like, and what car hit what car?
There's two red lights in front of our building just on the corners, and a lot of times, uh, we're across from General Dynamics, just a very large employer, people just won't even look at the light at General Dynamics and will just drive into two lanes and there'll be a head-on collision, which we caught on film and we we assist local law enforcement every chance we can. Um, and also, in our parking lot, at the beginning, our parking lot was really tight, so sometimes we would, we only had fourteen parking spaces in our place now before we bought an adjacent uh building and tore it down. So, we had a bumper-to-bumper a couple of times, just like a small ding, and then the police come and the cannabis state may provide the footage, but yeah, like Ben was saying, we've never had any activity that was, you know, break break the law activity that took place in our our location.
We had false fire alarms.
Yes, we have had that.
So, we had to practice fire evacuations and uh the fire departments came. Uh, we've always, since even before we opened, we were very cooperative with, you know, the local law enforcement and fire staff. Uh, and we plan to do the same.
We originally opened, I think, the first week, we actually paid for police detail just to satisfy the city, just the community to show them that whatever you need, we'll do it, the police deemed it pretty unnecessary really quickly, but we're we're happy to do whatever was asked of us.
My last question, does your fun come from New York or can it come from anywhere?
Every everything will have to be within the state because with the federal illegality, you can't cross any state lines, so everything will come from licensed uh, New York manufacturers and manufacturers.
I don't know if it's still happening, but there's another cannabis store that wants to open uh half mile away from me. Um, we had set hours, I think, only till nine o'clock, you mentioned being open till ten, that wouldn't jive.
And. Yeah, so that's a, that's a point, thank you, that's a point that we're gonna, we're gonna reconcile.
Okay, and two cannabis stores within a town that's only has four thousand people, do you foresee a problem? Because they came to us first.
Um, yeah, so one, the hours of operation, we're obviously gonna work with the village and be, you know, in compliance with whatever their requests are. Um, in terms of two dispensaries being in one location, um, we feel very confident that it's actually not a bad thing and that it can kind of keep us both um, in check with what the customers are looking for. We currently operate a store, um, it's a little larger of a city, but there's seven dispensaries within a mile of each other.
What's the population there?
It's uh forty thousand.
We have four thousand.
Yes, so, um, it is a different population for sure. But, um, what we have found specifically in New York, uh, there's already upwards of two hundred and fifty licensed cultivators and manufacturers where there's only thirty adult-use uh retail stores in the whole state. So, with so many cultivators and manufacturers, they're actually struggling to find people to sell to. We feel if there's a second dispensary in town, uh, we'll probably carry hundred percent different products and offerings that will still allow both stores to be competitive with each other.
Will you work closely with each other?
I bet you talk, yeah, we we've already been introduced to him and, um, even in the Berchers, we know pretty much all the owners of all the other dispensaries as well. Um, we're certainly not in a mindset of, you know, squash our competitors, we feel that having competitors makes the market stabilize and it's gonna allow, it's not, excuse me, we're not going to upcharge our costs because we know we have a competitor that is setting different prices. It'll ultimately keep the consumers having a fair market uh to shop at, and it, uh, we believe the industry as a whole in New York, uh, they need more retailers for these people who are already licensed to survive. They're all sitting on giant stockpiles that they can't sell, but their facilities cost millions of dollars to open um, because of how intensive a process it is. So, we feel the multiple stores, you know, yes, it's a smaller village, but uh the industry will benefit more from it and with the commuter traffic as well, uh, we feel it's gonna bring a lot of people into the village, not only to shop at our place, but we'll also be recommending, you know, other local establishments to meet their other goods. Not that there's many, uh, in that shopping closet, there's a few, sure, sure.
A number of years ago, the village put in a uh moratorium on too many um auto sales uh lots around. What is that in relation to this? I mean, that was a a valid point a number of years ago.
It's a good question, so somebody asked me, well, how many is too many? And too many would be three, there is nowhere else in the village to put another dispensary that would meet the compliance of twenty-five hundreds.
Twenty-five hundred, eight plus, plus five hundred.
Plus five hundred, so, so, yeah.
Very limited locations that.
So, what's the maximum number? The maximum number for this village would be?
Yeah, please.
I got a question, alright, when this place is open, you know, sometime during next year, how many workers are gonna work there?
We have an anticipation between thirty and forty, it's very hard to gauge, uh, it's gonna face ourselves around kind of the hours of operation too, knowing how long we can be open, whether or not we need two shifts, whether or not it can be accomplished with one shift, but we have an anticipation at a minimum. We're gonna have at least, I'd say about twenty individuals in the building at any given time, and we do have the anticipation of opening seven days a week, so we would need about thirty at a minimum and probably forty at a maximum. Uh, and one of the plans that we have put forth in our uh application is hiring local, staying local, providing jobs to local people, uh, that's something we did in Pittsfield where I think close to seventy percent of the people who work for us are from the town that we are in. Uh, so we're gonna do our best to try to hire local individuals who, uh, you know, don't have a hard time getting to work and and also who want to have a good job, we we pay well, we take care of them, we give good benefits. Uh, that's something that we really are proud of because we work at the store, we rely on these benefits.
And how many clients it's gonna serve every day?
Uh, we, it's very hard to tell, uh, but we we do have, uh, right now, we're doing about three hundred and fifty a day, it's on on weekend days.
I meant, what about here in Manance, once it gets open?
Uh, we're we're gonna hope for at a minimum about three hundred and fifty people a day, customers.
And how many stores is building gonna have, just one or two?
One store in that, in our building, in our location.
One forty, me, alright. Alright, well, thanks for answering my question.
Go ahead, Tom.
What's uh, what's potential impact to having a methadone clinic a few feet away?
So, it's funny that you ask that because in Pittsfield, we are actually open right next door to Spectrum. We are legitimately the building adjacent to a Spectrum clinic, which is the different uh fusion and spectrum kind of our similar arrangement. One of the big issues that we had had in our initial community outreach programming was the trouble that the community has with the Spectrum clinic, right? We took the position that because we are monitored security at all times, we actually were a benefit to the Spectrum clinic because a a lot of the Spectrum clinic customers were coming from six to ten A M. And there was a Sinoco on the other side of us that was constantly being robbed. Ultimately, because people were strung out or whatever they were, they were cut, so when we came in and we had twenty-four seven camera coverage and three hundred and sixty degrees, everything changed. We were very clear with the Spectrum individuals who were coming across our property, this is not a location to loiter at, this is not a place to hang out at, and it's no longer gonna be tolerated, and everything kind of changed. And now there's a much more respectful relationship, I think, between us and the Spectrum clinic because we set the ground rules that said you can't do what you used to do any longer at this location. And when you kind of set that and maintained that arrangement, they just changed their behavior, ultimately is what they did for the Spectrum clinic, and a lot of those Spectrum people actually became our customers, which.
And we've never had, we've never had an issue with any of them.
Yeah.
And I mean, other than hanging out on the sidewalk, which is perfectly fine with us because like you said, it's always monitored, it's always reported, if anything actually happened, we we have the coverage, but.
And we're in a unique position with regards to loitering specifically, where the nature of our business, um, we feel very comfortable telling everybody there's no loitering specifically because it gives the hint that there might be product diverting uh to minors, which is obviously our biggest concern in the cannabis industry, so we've been very comfortable telling people you can't learn loiter here because it seems like you might be diverting product. Everybody has always been very receptive to that type of response that, you know, we're scrutinized more than the average business. So, it kind of gives us also another bargaining chip to be like, oh, you gotta move along, not because you're a Spectrum customer or whatever you are, uh, it's just because of the standards that we hold our business to.
Will you have security guards?
We, at our Pittsfield location, we had a security guard for the first two years. We um stopped uh hiring the guard mainly because we didn't see the need for it anymore. Um, we're certainly willing to hire a security guard if uh that's, you know, if it becomes a concern um, at this location, we already have experience working with third-party contractors doing this. Um, our current plan does not have it because we have felt very comfortable how we operate our current store without one. But um it's a practice we're very comfortable with in case it does turn into that.
What we saw in Massachusetts was at the beginning, everybody has third-party or hired security outside. And now you'd be, you'd be hard pressed to find someone who still does. Because there hasn't been any like lost time incidents at any dispensaries in Massachusetts in the last five years. So they kind of, unfortunately, they get such a good job, it kind of ran them out of a, out of a job. Because, you know, just the presence of them and just the security requirements and everything, no one's ever really tried anything anywhere.
I was mentioning to uh, to Ryan, uh, your police chief, we have a, a, a facial recognition camera at our front door. So you come to us and your face is captured, right? You then come into our store and you present us with your identification. And you put that ID on a scanner that scans it and captures your information. We don't send it to any government agencies or anything like that, that is a misconception. But if you were to then go and do something, you, ultimately, they've got all your information, we know where you live or at least your. Best known prior address, we have a direct photograph of your face with facial detection software. It's not like that grainy camera footage you see on Walmart when it's like the public needs help finding this individual. It's, you know, we, we, we've never had an instance, we've never had to go to that level. But I think our customers also realize this is a professional arrangement, professional business. Um, and I've invited uh the chief, the chief and his detective group and the mayor, I've invited uh the officials to come and see how we operate Massachusetts. So they can get a better sense of, um, you know, how we run our business. And we, we really do take pride in the uh ability of running a, a tight ship and a well-organized business. And that's really what we want to bring some hands. Our, our customer base mainly uh in the Berkshires is New York residents, capital region, resident specific. Uh, within one mile, or excuse me, within, I think it's, I think it's an eight mile circle that we drew off of our location, we have sixty-five thousand customers by address. So when you mention, you know, a village of four thousand, just the customers that have shot with us in Massachusetts, if you drew an eight mile circle around our location. Sixty-five thousand people fall within that uh realm, which is quite a lot of people. I know all of these very close water police connecting to all of these cities and towns. That's where the core group of our customer is and our hope is that we can bring our well-known service, uh, well-known product, well-known uh brand and everything to them. So they don't have to make that hour and fifteen minute trip. And I think it also really boils down to the village would receive four percent. Of the revenue that we do in the form of taxes. I know that there's a split, I don't know the split between Colony, the other surrounding uh numbers. But our hope, our optimistic hope here is we can do at least ten million dollars in annual business. Which ultimately can result in a four hundred thousand dollar tax payment to the village, which I know can really help offset some of these expenses, you know.
You desire one and a half of that of the town of Talonese?
We're negotiating with Colony on exactly which piece of that we're going to get by statute. It's the way the law is written, it's fifty, fifty, fifty with the town and we're trying to negotiate that. And working with Steve on some language in the law to make that argument.
And that's really also how we want our impact to be felt, right? And we've, we've already reached out to a bunch of other local charitable organizations. We've touched base with the Humane Society, we've touched base with some other groups. We wanna work with local organizations because we want our impact felt locally. You know, with, with people, with, with organizations that matter to this community. That's, that's another thing that we really wanna make sure that our impact is felt not just from a revenue standpoint, but also from. You're gonna see us, you're gonna see us around, we're gonna be here. It's just isn't what it is. We, we're putting a lot into this, our life savings is going into this, we wanna see it succeed.
So I'm trying to wrap my head around the statement earlier that you're right next door to Spectrum. So do you front Merrill Avenue or Lard Street?
We, our, so our address is to Lard Street, the curb cut is off of Lard Street, but our business location is also on Merrill Road. Merrill and Lard is a corner, street.
Right, I see it here on the map.
Yeah.
But it says Spectrum is like a block and a half up.
It's one building, it's one building on the other side. Yeah, it's on Laurel Street.
Victor and Laurel Street?
Laurel, so Laurel and Lard run parallel, there's one piece of, there's one property, we, we own the property right in between.
And what is that property?
Blue Brothers, that's our dispensary.
The property in between was our old real estate office, before we opened the dispensary.
Okay, so you own from Lard Street to Laurel Street?
Correct.
Okay. And so that puts you, so the Laurel Street side, is that where your dispensary is or is it on a Lard Street?
The Lard, the Lard Street side is where our dispensary is.
Does your Lard Street side cameras literally take up a block over to Spectrum? Because it just, it just seems weird on the map.
Yeah, not the Spectrum building itself. We don't, we don't video tape that because that's, yeah, that's, that's their private property. We can't go off of our, um, off of our space and onto the public roadway. We can record all of that and all of our property. We even have cameras that point into the other property we own into that parking lot to make sure that no one comes through there. So we have that monitored daily, but we don't have any physical coverage of their building or their property at all.
Okay, so the cameras don't reach Spectrum?
Not Spectrum, no, no, not Spectrum.
I could see you could get the Sinoco station pretty good.
Yeah, we have all that.
So because you have the facial recognition cameras there that you're, so what about the clients that are going to get treated? So you're picking them up and saving all their?
No, the facial recognition is at our front door. You probably do the dispensary, uh, you have to present your ID. Ultimately, you have to present your ID for us to allow you in. So we get a capture of the individual, the identification. You then come into our reception area, put your ID on like a, a scanner, which is very similar to if you went to a, a, a bar or a club or something, they scan your ID to verify your age. That scanner just captures the information, your age, your date of birth, making sure your ID is not expired because we have to stick to federal law, we can't serve an expired identification. Um, and that facial recognition camera just verifies that the ID that was presented, the person on the ID is the same as.
I just didn't know how far out to the park.
No, just, just at the door, at the door is the facial recognition camera.
And so because of this proximity is much closer than a whole block from the Spectrum facility. You're confident being adjacent to what could potentially be an outpatient clinic is not gonna interrupt or interfere with your business in any way.
So what we have within our power is, you know, we're gonna monitor our parking lot, which will be fully lit up at night too. Um, and we can monitor if somebody, let's say, you know, stumbled over and. Uh, was causing a disturbance to our premises. Um, we wanna have a working relationship with, you know, police officers, firefighters, EMTs. Um, in our power, if we saw somebody was like laying on the ground in our parking lot, we would call to have emergency services come. Um, and as I was talking about with loitering earlier, you know, we also are very comfortable telling people they can't loiter in our parking lot. Not even if they were a customer over there or not, just based on our standards.
So you under, you understand our concerns. We, we love the four percent. It has nothing to do with your business.
Sure.
It just has everything to do with the proximity of your business and what we are facing. And like you said, you're gonna depend on law enforcement, which is how many police officers do we have on now and how many do you have to increase to, to monitor this? Because.
We won't.
We were taught, well, we would have been told with the facility like Fusion, if they're able to get their OTP permit. That the increase with drug dealers themselves, just the presence in the parking lot lane for the people that are in recovery. Um, it, it gets complicated for us as residents and citizens here, you know, and then understanding this whole big picture of holy moly. And, and our police officers, you know, are gonna be stretched out there or are they gonna be down at the other dispensary or on fire calls? This poor guy doesn't get a break. Every time I turn around, he's in a fire truck. The alarms don't stop.
Sure, so I, I also, we feel comfortable handling situations ourselves in terms of just generic loitering. Um, more so, I was trying to lean towards it, it's like a emergency situation, like somebody's on the ground or like a situation like that. We wanna be very comfortable working with uh public personnel for that. Um, we, you know. We don't feel that it's going to increase customers to them. What we've saw for us is we have a lot of people that. Started off going to the Spectrum clinic next to us and then started coming to our store, then became regulars at our store. And then they have success stories that they don't go to Spectrum anymore because they have access to legal, you know, cannabis. Uh, I think the thing that the cannabis industry has done for our community in particular. Um, it makes the access to these products so much easier and in a more comfortable way. That it really uh limits and decreases that type of black market activity in these communities. Um, the sheer access to it is just such a game changer for most of our customers. Um, I understand the concerns you're mentioning. We're gonna do everything in our power for, to make sure our, you know. Building and our uh parking lot area uh does not have that activity going out.
Um, and we would, we would think, and what we've seen is because of how much surveillance we put out coming into our place now and that we have uh license plate cameras and everything. So we have your license plate, we have make and model of things, we can see your face when you're close enough. So I would think that would actually be a big deterrent away from people wanting to come and park their car and get caught with people coming in and out or doing suspicious.
That's, that's a great point. So we forced a sign saying that you have all that technology.
Yeah, it's everybody, it's everything. And we have, in Massachusetts, I believe the rule is we have ninety-day retention at all times. So we have the last three months of twenty-four, seven reported at all times at least a couple of years or something. So we, we work with everyone we can there. Yeah, we, we've actually seen like a, a decrease, as Nate mentioned, in time in that area since we came there.
Sinoco Station has not been held up since the open. I talked to the owner, um, they were being run twice a month prior to ours. And I think it also just pulls us down to, and when I met with the chief, we are gonna have camera coverage. So if there is suspicious activity and the police wanna come down and wanna take a look at our footage that may be pointed in any general direction of the overall property, they're more than welcome to.
Well, I think that's part of the deal anyway.
Yep, absolutely. Well, we have access and, and we're gonna have coverage. We, uh, we have a drawing, I believe the drawing was for forty-eight individual cameras, inside and outside combined, right? So there cannot be a blind spot on any square foot inside or outside, and this is almost an acre, this is point seven acres. There will be light posts, three sixty-degree view cameras in our parking lot, and they, there will be full-blown coverage. It will be out to Broadway, it'll be out to the bus area. It, it, it's gonna be very, very, very well covered.
Right, if it was just you guys down there, it would be, you know, four percent and everybody, it's fine, but it's, you know, it's, it's a drug, you're resigning a drug. To people that already have drug problems and I, it's a stretch to say, I don't know, I don't have the skill or the knowledge, but Steve Blay certainly does. Steve, is that true? People that are coming?
Laura, Laura, please, we're not, Laura, we're not, we're not going to debate here.
I just wanna know it's true or not.
There's some people that find success with that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Sure, there, there's the point. That was the point. It was a good point, Laura.
Are you done with your questions, Laura?
Um, yes, I'll leave my questions.
Anyone else? Hearing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing on four forty-two Broadway. Alright, uh, ready for our regular meeting? Alright, we need a motion for the uh November sixth minutes, please.
So move.
Second?
All in favor.
Hi, anyone opposed?
Warrant number twelve, general, eighty-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, fifty-three cents. Water, seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars, thirty-one cents. Nothing in sewer, totally ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Aerial number twelve, hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, forty-eight cents. Aerial number thirteen, hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty-three cents, totally two hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, ninety-one cents, and there's no transfers.
Motion.
Hi, motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Well, we, just a reminder again, we did hold the uh call and hand check when you go back.
Satisfactory. Is, is it still not satisfactory?
Uh, we're gonna have Don reach out to Matt, to, uh, what's his name, Nick?
Oh, yeah, uh, who you?
Nick.
How's it going, guys? Uh, search started in the nation, just from it. So for, with the PVA, we're um collecting unwrapped toys, uh, Toys for Tots. The boxes we're collecting now until the middle, middle of December, they were boxed downstairs by dispatch center and also at the all village offices. So if you guys would like to join, that'd be great. Going to a good cause every year and there's always, I mean, lately on the news, it's been, um. So it's Toys for Tots, great turnout. So I mean, we appreciate it, you guys are amazing. Thank you.
You too.
Any questions? What you got, Bill?
I'll be happy to bring some delusions to the Toys for Tots like I do every year.
Appreciate it.
I, I just ever thirded it in.
Okay.
I'm still looking forward to doing this.
Me too. Just make sure they're unwrapped for us, alright, Bill?
Don't worry, anything, nothing.
Thank you, board.
Don, you'll follow up with Callan Ann?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Here we go now. Fifty fifty-six Clifford Road. Um, so there's, there's a few things that Lobella is still looking for some clarification on, correct, Lauren? So, um. One of the things that I, I think needs to be discussed uh here tonight is, is exactly where we are in the process for fifty fifty-six Clifford Road. And there seems to be a misunderstanding about where we are. We are reviewing site plan approval. The project was approved by the zoning board. The zoning board approved this project with relief for one item and that item was specifically that they were asking for one and a half apartments more than was allowed by right. So that is the approval of a project. The village board has the right to review the site. And we're gonna go over the intricacies of that law uh in executive session with Steve. So we are not going to decide that particular issue here tonight because there's still some things that we need to run by Lobella. Get agreement on that we're satisfactory and then the village board can talk about exactly, you know, what we wanna do with the site plan. But that is the point that we're at with this. So there's some misunderstanding about the village's, this uh board's discretion and ability. Uh, you know, to, to stop a project that meets the zoning. So we were at the same point uh with the arrival of Fusion, okay? The, the, the Fusion group is a medical office. The building at four forty-four Broadway was zoned for medical offices. That's, that's how we ended up at the place that we're at, okay? It's, it's all in the zoning law. Uh, it's not a case-by-case basis. So the village board does not have the discretion to, to stop a project. Uh, because the neighbors don't want it. The zoning is what dictates the application of the zoning law. In someone's inherent right to develop their property. That's the law. So um I, I hope everyone understands that. Um, you don't have to agree with it, but that's, that is the law. So I just wanna make that very clear, that the next meeting that we have to discuss fifty fifty, fifty, fifty-six Clifford Road will be to talk about the site. To talk about the elements of the site and how their uh proposed project uh works uh on that site. So um we're gonna, we're gonna uh, you know, hold that over till December fourth.
So just a shorter version of that, we can't say no to the project. We can put conditions on it. But in the current zoning law, and I say current because I'm not happy with it, we cannot turn the project down. So as much as I wanna sit up here and say, we're not gonna do it, I can't.
Alright, so that's where we're at. Next on the agenda, let's talk about uh forty, uh, four forty-two Broadway and the special use permit. Uh, does the board have any questions based on the presentation, some of the elements that were presented?
I mean, I did have a couple of questions for the guys.
Yes.
Um, you talk about working with like other people in the community, nonprofits, things like that. Do you have current relationships right now in Massachusetts and how do they look like?
We do, also this morning, we actually did the Thanksgiving Angels uh through the South Congregational Community Church. Uh, we did, it ended up targeting two thousand families uh this morning. Uh, we did, it ended up targeting 2,000 families, uh, this morning. Uh, we, we try to partner with as many organizations that fit the allowable terms of the, the state. So in Massachusetts, you have to work with individuals or groups that are disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. That's kind of what it boils down to. So the South Congregational Church, for example, they help a lot of homeless individuals out, a lot of disabled veterans. Uh, we work with the Humane Society because adopting a patent for individuals is a huge thing. Uh, we also work with, uh, the Wounded Warrior Project. We work with, uh, what was the last prisoner project we just finished? That's, uh, trying to get everybody who's in jail currently for, uh, use of marijuana or trafficking or anything like that out of jail. Um, and I think, and so, uh, Jimmy Fawn, we work with.
Work with Jimmy Fawn, we've worked with the Childcare of the Berkshires, the YMCA is out there. Um, we, you know, I started looking into some of the programs that are out there. I haven't had responses from anyone yet, but, you know, I've reached out to the Mohawk Hudson Berkshires, our Mohawk Hudson Humane Society, the Daughters of Charity organization there. Um, so we definitely want to be, you know, involved with the community and, you know, actually, uh, work with organizations that impact Manans specifically. You know, we know that there's organizations in the community and it's connected. But, uh, we're trying to open up business here and we want the impact to be felt here more so than anywhere else.
And then currently you do not have a license, you're in the process of the application.
So we have applied, we applied for a license. We were application number 15 for the New York State. Um, they have given indications that within the next seven days, we will get information back on our application as to if we need additional info, if we qualify, if we have to submit additional paperwork. Um, and we are hopeful that we get a license, but that is out of our control. Uh, I think the plan for us would be if we were awarded a special use permit, even if we did not get a license on this initial, uh, term, we would just continue to apply, uh, until we were to receive a license.
So the building would sit vacant until you received a license?
The building would sit vacant as far as operating a cannabis dispensary out of it. Yeah, we wouldn't be able to operate a cannabis dispensary without licenses required. But as far as the work being done, we anticipate, you know, with the building permit that we did receive and we did submit for, we would anticipate doing the work to the building so that we can be prepared for investing a significant amount of money into the rehab and reinsurance of the building without a doubt.
And then, so you talked about like recruiting people and that kind of thing. How do you recruit for something that's so new in New York State? And what does the training look like for those employees?
So when it comes to recruitment, um, we actually have a partnership established with the local union 338 already, Nikki Kateman, the local political advisor. Uh, she's got a list of about 250 people interested in applying for jobs at dispensaries that I've spoken to her, and that was as recently as when we applied for our application because we needed to get a letter. But we do have some individuals at our store currently in Pittsfield that would help us with our training programming. Uh, the, in Massachusetts, you have to do is called Responsible Vendor Training. It's an RBT program. They haven't come out with the Responsible Vendor Training yet in New York, but they do have trainers in Massachusetts that do intend to apply for RBT in New York when the, when the laws do come out. Um, we would ultimately start to hire people probably about two months prior to our potential opening date. So we would try to finish up the construction or get very close to the finished construction so we could start training them just on daily operations. It does take quite a while to get you up to speed on the compliance aspect of it, how much you can sell, how the, how you run through the transaction. But ultimately, we would be willing to hold an open house, we would be willing to work with, you know, whatever organizations. It may not be a bad idea to communicate with a local school. I don't know if, uh, like Hudson Valley Community College, for example, has any cannabis, uh, programs, but we do work with Berkshire Community College, which did install a cannabis training program. And we've hired an individual out of that cannabis training program. So we, we're open to really any, anything from when it comes to hiring, uh, but we want to try to stay as local as possible.
So a non-New York resident can work in a New York cannabis?
Yes, yep. As long as they can get the, uh, you do need to get a license, uh, through Massachusetts, the CCC, you have to become a registered agent. Uh, we do have a couple of people actually who live in New York that work in our store in Massachusetts.
Um, well, specifically for tonight's, uh, hearing, it was in regard to the, uh, special use permit. Uh, so there, you know, as you know, there are a number of requirements under that, specifically set in the use of objection. I think you spoke a bit to that earlier. Uh, use will not adversely affect property values in the vicinity and, uh, public health and safety and general welfare of the village will not be adversely affected by the post used in this location. Could you speak a bit directly to those requirements and how you see that, uh, moving forward?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, we did submit a write-up to you guys, um, a few days ago, um, specifically with regards to property values, um, the.
Well, I'm looking at it, I just wanted you to.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Um, so.
I do like your response, but I just want to hear you.
Of course, I have to. Um, the National Association of Realtors, uh, across the, uh, US did a recent study, um, and it found 90%, I believe, of, uh, Realtors said they either did not see any change or they saw an increase in property values, uh, surrounding, uh, legal dispensaries. Um, specifically with our property, you know, in its commercial zoning area. Um, there are some residences, um, you know, kind of behind the plaza in that direction. Um, but overall, for the commercial properties nearby, we expect to have such increased traffic from, you know, not only locals but commuters as well that it's just gonna make other businesses see that extra foot traffic as well, which can hopefully, um, help these businesses, you know, increase their revenue. Um, I know another thing Manans really wants to see happen in that Broadway district is, you know, more landscaping improvements to the aesthetics of that area. Um, we are, you know, limited with the amount of, you know, lawn we have, for instance, but we're definitely going to improve the aesthetics. We've already started some painting with the current, uh, building permit we have. On top of that, we want to put, you know, uh, planters on the sidewalk areas as well as spruce up that area into the bus stop. And, uh, there are people that, you know, once we put those improvements in, um, you know, we're hoping that that can kind of start causing a snowball effect. Specifically with the plaza that we're in, uh, you know, we've been talking to the owners of that plaza as well throughout this whole process and we're hopeful that, you know, they can speed up their timeline with, uh, sprucing up the area once they see how fast we're going to work to do it. Um, with regards to, what were the other two addresses impacting neighbors?
Yeah, adverse impacted to.
Sure.
Surely.
Um, yeah, as we spoke, uh, mainly with our security, you know, lands, uh, with all the camera coverage we're gonna have, we really, uh, feel it's going to, you know, limit employee array and suspicious activity that happen there. Um, and once again, with the increased foot traffic we're gonna have, it's just gonna offer, you know, local businesses more opportunity to see more customers than I may not have seen. Other than.
And you're willing to work with the city, that you're seeing?
A hundred percent, yeah. We, uh, we just threw those hours out. The, uh, when we applied for the license with the state, they made us throw out specific hours, under 70 hours in a week. Um, so we were just kind of tinkering with what we thought would be busy, busier hours. Um, I'll be honest, I wasn't aware of the Village's requirement to not be open until 10:00. So now that we know it will, a hundred percent abide.
So off that subject a little bit, you also submitted, uh, uh, to Lobella a secret application, a secret form. Now, one of the responses, is the property contiguous to any national registered historic places? And the answer was no, but that's not correct because I believe Albany Rural, to which it's adjacent to the property, is. National Register.
Well, it's in the National Register, but it's only rural, really contingent because it's St. Agnes owns that.
That's, that's my question. So St. Agnes owns the entire village?
They own, St. Agnes owns the whole front.
So they're in, they, they own the front and you enter. So that's adjacent?
No.
So that's on St. Agnes. Albany Rural starts way out.
Only wrote.
So not, so St. Agnes is not in it. Albany Rural is in.
Yeah, and I believe the form said something like, "To the best of your current knowledge" or something. So that's why I was comfortable.
Well, in the ancient ways, it's a route up the cemetery avenue is a route to both of the cemeteries, one of which is on the National Historic Register.
Gotcha.
Just so you were aware.
Then thank you for that, I was.
Would, would we, if we're talking about hours, would we make them both the same as?
As, as similar as possible, if they could work out. Yeah, that would make sense.
Or at least in the parameters.
Yeah, because you can't have, say, say to one, you're operating hours or this, and we agree to this. And then the others are.
Right.
Oddly different.
Great. So at least give them the parameters and then with that, if they don't want to open at that time, they want to open later, that's fine, or, uh, close earlier. Get those parameters.
So the biggest, the biggest item that was, that was a concern for us was the earlier opening.
Right.
So as long as the opening wasn't earlier.
Yeah, I, well, I.
Wasn't the later one a concern? I'm sorry, I missed the topic.
I, I will speak though, um, on that because, uh, obviously our store in Massachusetts, for example, we do the majority of our business on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's just kind of the way it is, and some people have the most free time, you know? So we would, we would definitely open later on Monday or Tuesday or, or whatever if it needed to be. Because those tend to be a bit slower days for us. I, we want to work with whatever needs to be done for the hours. That's, that's really.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the Board?
I do just have one more, especially in an ideal world, when would you open?
Um, so we kind of hope that construction would take about four to six months. Uh, we're kind of hoping for probably, uh, quarter two or early quarter three of an issue.
So would we put conditions on the, exactly the same as previous applicants? That?
I think so, yes, yes.
Is that?
Would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have all those conditions. Steve, do I need to read all those conditions?
Read conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think technically I don't have it in front of me, but it may only have, what, 62 days from today.
So can we leave the hearing open or the?
You can close the, uh, the public hearing.
Public hearing.
And then once you close the public hearing, I believe you have 62 days to issue a decision on the application.
Okay. There's still some things outstanding still, isn't there? There's still some additional items that we, that Lobella has to get?
Hey. We, we did communicate with, uh, Matt via email. He did say, it was Thursday of last week, that he did say, receive number eight. There was a special condition, number eight, that we had summarized in an earlier, uh, attachment. I just don't think he had the reference of, but number eight, what, if you want to touch on number eight, it was like the.
Probably, is that crowd ordering litigation?
Yeah, so we had, we had sent the security plan initially, but then we had to make a couple of adjustments to some camera location, which we worked with, uh, our, our local, uh, electrical Caruso contractor. And I resubmitted them to, uh, to, to Matt. I just don't think he's had a chance to review them yet. Um, so that was the one.
Yeah, the crowd mitigation plan touches on the occupancy of the building, um, along with the drive-through access for other cars. And then the sidewalk that, uh, lines the building right there. Um, we do that provides, you know, plenty of space for, uh, lines or queues to form. Also our willingness to hire a security guard if it be, uh, if that comes to that issue at one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with any of that. I'm just thinking we should probably wait till we, uh, we have confirmation from Matt that everything is, um, has been, uh, received and is good before we, uh, before we.
And I can copy the provisions from the previous.
Yes, yes. And just make sure we're on the same page with all the conditions.
The conditions.
Yep. Yeah. We'll have those ready for you.
We'll have to get a copy of your.
You can make those all conditions.
Yeah, once they get it, you guys.
Take your side for me, hold on, hold on. Show that.
Time for an application, yeah.
Yep, but, but, yes, without a license, that was one of the things, you know, you get a license, it's free to put up a sign.
So that way it's spelled out then. So we're tabling, as you said, approval on the special, the special use permit till December 4th.
And you have, if you're closing the public hearing, you have 62 days.
Correct.
Everything can be, presumably can be addressed. And I believe you, if it doesn't get addressed, you can get, you can request a advisement of an extension or regress, whatever, outstanding.
Is that, is that, that, that's not doing?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Table for the December 4th?
December 4th, table to some, September 4th, or December 4th.
Well, well, will do the hearing.
The hearing is closed. Okay. Uh, next up on the agenda is a discussion regarding the health plan for, uh, the Village and Police, CDPHP. Uh, we had some, I guess, some discussion on it. Uh, the PBA has, uh, approved, uh, that they were satisfied with the plan that we discussed and some of the, uh, contributions we'll make towards the, um, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Towards the deductible. Um, Bill sent a. Did he give it to everybody?
No.
No, I just.
It was to employees. Employees are gonna, basically got, are going to receive a letter that shows the breakdown. Um, so let's just talk about basically the, the, the change to the goal plan. The cost, like, just to recap of our current plan, uh, the current plan is increasing by 13.6%. Uh, the cost then to the village would be roughly a hundred and some thousand dollars if we were to keep additional, that we would, if we kept the same plan. Uh, the proposal of our insurance broker and working through some possible alternatives is to offer employees the gold, the gold CDPHP plan, uh, which has a lower monthly premium, uh, but to also contribute towards the initial deductible, which otherwise is zero for platinum and is $1,600 for a single, $3,200 for a family plan. Even if the village pays those deductibles, then there's a net savings, a small net savings, uh, to the village. So the end result is that the change in coverage is minimal, if not zero, to most, uh, most of our, uh, insurance with the PHS. Um, so we talked it over with the PBA. We met with the PBA and our insurance broker. Uh, Dan Braden's wife is an insurance broker herself. She asked a lot of good questions and, and after discussion, the PBA approved, uh, uh, the, the change is acceptable. And so what we're talking about now is, is, uh, approving this so that we can start filling out whatever we need to do for January 1st coverage.
Because it's, it takes third deduction, the, the premiums start being deducted with the first paycheck and deductible.
So does the Board have any questions?
As, as compare, as long as they're in agreement and, you know, compared to a 13.6 increase, uh, you know, I think this is a great alternative. Not to mention it's a good plan, so.
Yeah.
So, I agree.
I have one question. What, what's the overall cost now with the, the change, approximately? Total, like 500 grand?
From year to year?
Yeah, your budget says 510,000. So with the additions of what you're doing now, would.
It's actually less.
It's going to be less than the 510,000.
That's correct, and that's, that's including the, if we pay every employee who takes our insurance, the entire deductible.
Okay, great, that's interesting. And then, um, it's just the one, two, two, five goal plan, correct? There's not more than multiple plans off?
That's correct, we're only offering one plan.
So there's an 80/20 split, correct?
Correct.
Awesome, and keep the budget, I was wondering.
Anyone on the Board? I mean, good. All right, we need a motion to approve the CDPHP goal plan.
I will make a motion to, uh, the Board to approve the CDPHP goal plan for our employees.
A second?
All in favor. Hi, anyone opposed? Okay, we, um, talking about, okay, all right, so we'll take, we'll, we'll.
She said she'd let me know.
Okay.
And I'd really like to get her out.
I would like to get her out. So I think that's, we'll table that, uh, one more time. Hopefully the.
Yes.
People running this?
Uh, well, again, it's only proposed, so it was, it was, uh, yeah, it was Steve. Steve. Uh, Jody. Right? Uh, and, uh.
I'm hoping to get a major.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's great, and then we need to.
Right.
So, so we'll table that for.
Yeah.
Do you still want Brett?
No.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we, we got some, we got some good, some, some good.
No. I mean, it's possible, I mean, we can talk about it. No, that's where I, my question was if they still wanted her and she's, uh, as far as she's concerned, uh, she agreed that she, yes.
Right, I'll, I'll send the board a new list.
Okay, that's true.
Yep.
Okay. Um. All right, let's talk about some reports. Don, you want to, excuse me, go first? Don't want to hit everything?
Do it everything.
All right. So some business development updates. Um, in Mid-City Plaza, the battle-ready baseball that is in the rear of the plaza that no one can really see has decided to take uh the front spot next door to Dollar Tree and increase their square footage from two thousand to six thousand square foot, so they're going to have a sign, and apparently they're doing very well. Uh, I met with a company called Mailworks. Mailworks bought the Bloomberg building, which is uh.
That's crazy.
Right down here. Um, they are a certified women-owned business. It does direct mail order printing. Uh, I met with the owner and she is bringing ninety jobs uh to start to Manans with it, so that's exciting. She's going to do a lot of outfit on the building to uh, uh, set it up and uh.
They're moving the entire operation there?
Entire operation is moving from their Albany location to.
Where? Where did you say it?
Bloomberg, Bloomberg is, is like across from Brink's.
Yeah.
The yellow brick one.
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Also a Shaker High School graduate.
Yeah.
Yeah, classmate of mine, yes, yeah.
Small word.
Yeah, she's, she's super nice.
Very.
She bought the business from her family, so.
Um, she's also a experienced business owner. Outside of that, she has other ventures, which is, is great.
She was, she just sold them.
Oh, did she?
She sold both restaurants.
Okay, well. I did not know that.
Uh, one sixty-nine Broadway is the uh parking lot across from Riverview Center where the, the school buses were parking. Uh, Riverview Center, after Don and I met with the management over there, uh, is looking at potentially redeveloping that entire parcel, which I think is like nine or eleven acres. Um, so we're talking with them about some possibilities. Uh, they want potentially to use it as a mixed-use development, so. Uh, so that's exciting. As I think everybody has noticed, the buses are gone. They moved out to their new home. Um, one fifty Broadway at Riverview Center, when Don and I met with them, they talked about Suite five hundred, which is on the fifth floor, is being.
They're going to bring in two hundred people?
Two hundred people.
I think it was two hundred. They're bringing a state.
And uh they just filed with Lyle for about six hundred thousand dollars in fit-up renovations. Um, so that's exciting.
Is that where it was formerly not developed since?
Correct, yeah.
Decades ago.
Yeah. They're also talking with tenants to take uh large floors on the upper floors, which have not been rented to our knowledge since Montgomery Ward left. So those are some exciting developments there. Uh, Ship-O, which is a women-owned business that operates out of Riverview Center, is expanding. Uh, they do some sort of shipping business uh for, for retail clients uh out of Riverview Center. Uh, date construction down at Four Wolfert is uh, is just applying for building permit.
Their building permit, and they did, the demo's over, now they're doing a building permit.
And that's a Four Wolfert, the old Brad Soap uh building.
They getting down that old building?
No, they're gonna renovate it and make their construction office out of there for local construction. So that's some exciting business developments, so. Um, reminder for everybody that the holiday train is this Friday. At approximately four o'clock is when the train is arriving.
Train's gonna arrive at three forty-five and they're gonna start playing at four and they're leaving at four thirty.
All right. What time are they shutting the, the streets?
Two o'clock.
Two?
Okay, so there'll be parks out of the track.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
And we're gonna put the only one-side parking on Brookside?
No parking on Brookside.
There'll be no parking on Brookside? None, okay.
No parking at all.
I thought it was just.
Fire police on Brookside. Some people can't.
And event parking is at two seventy-nine, which is Castleman.
And we have two buses to bring the people from there to Clipper Road to turn around, they'll, they'll P O T and they come back down. Uh, we didn't.
And that was at the courtesy of First Student, the, the bus company.
And Ryan secured a sign. There's a sign out there telling that the event's coming and then on Friday, they say event parking is down here with an arrow, with an arrow.
And then there'll be food collection down at Castleman, and there'll also be one on Manan Road at Cornell and one on the other side in the park. And all of that is going to Sacred Heart Food Pantry.
Keep it low.
Yes.
So this is an exciting thing for the Village of Manans to bring the holiday train back.
Very.
Um, it's a logistical nightmare, but I think we've done pretty good and pulling it all off, so we'll see.
We'll see.
How it goes. Um.
I will walk.
That's the easiest way.
Uh, I just wanted to uh remind everybody who, although this not, uh, we're having some lingering campaign signs uh all over from others.
I picked up all mine.
Yours are, yours are good. It's everybody else, I think. So I don't know what we, I don't know what we do with those. Uh, I, I, I think it's appropriate for DPW to potentially collect them.
Yes.
Uh, and, and get them out uh of public right-of-ways and such. Uh, the fire department has uh provided me an updated, potential updated uh fire chief's car policy. And I'm going to be circulating that to the village board members for review so that we can decide on that the next meeting. Um, it's not much different but than the current policy, but um I'm sure we can figure that out by the next meeting. So we'll put that on the agenda for the fourth please. Uh.
Brian, do you mind if I just jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Two things, fire department. Um. The sale of the old chief's vehicle, we are currently talking with Rensler City Police Department. Uh, they have funds that they receive from like drug seizures and things like that. So we're looking at them as a potential buyer. It's not as much money as we would have liked, but it is a substantial amount of money to help offset the cost of the vehicle, the outfit, all the equipment. Um, with that as well, our grant writer reached out to me in the middle of, it was August or September, um with an opportunity for a grant from a memorial foundation, the Lieutenant Joseph P. DiVerdano Memorial Foundation. He was a firefighter that lost his life on the Black Sunday Fire at FDNY. Um, we received a grant for twelve thousand dollars for safety systems that are used for bailouts, so if we're on second, third, fourth floor, such of that. Um, so our nine thousand dollar investment in a grant writer so far for this year has given us one hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of funding. So I would say it's a investment well spent. We'll continue to work with her in the future and see what helps. So.
Thank you, David. Um, so why don't we take care of the uh chief's vehicle right now if we want?
Yes.
Um, so it's already been surplus, correct?
Yep.
So we just need board approval to accept.
You know how much they want? I think fifteen thousand was the number that they put up. I know we had hoped for twenty-two and change, but it is recirculating again to see if anybody else would reach out. We sent it to Allee County and talked to the county coordinator. He sent it out with his stuff, so if someone comes back and says more in the time was when they come and take a look at it and heard everything else, but.
So it's rentals let, let's stay here, like a, or?
No, they're gonna come and take a look. It's a potential buyer.
So we should wait?
Wait, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have anything to write anything like that, so. It's just a, it's a potential buyer. Or more than what we receive that's offered from.
Okay, that's, that's good. I was gonna ask. Okay, um. I gave everyone a copy of the letter for, uh, actual letter for, uh, solar simplified. We're making sure it's, it kind of answers all the questions, so I'm going to work with them on getting that accomplished. Uh, let's see, um. Let's see. Uh. Tree lighting. Go ahead, what is it?
December, I don't know. It's the third?
There.
Third, 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 third. They're gonna start coming in between two and four to decorate the trees. And then at four o'clock, we're having a tree lighting ceremony. There'll be hot chocolate refreshments and Santa Claus.
Okay. Um, police department, uh Logan Alexanderian has taken a position with Colony Police Department. His brother works there and um so he's decided to uh accept an offer with them. Uh, so we put out some requests for a lateral transfer. We got two applicants. Uh, and uh Kevin, Ryan and I uh interviewed the both of them. And uh so I included with everybody uh resume from Cody Bell, who is a person that we'd like to hire. Uh, he is currently a sergeant at Catskill PD. Uh, and he lives in Rensler, so he's not, he's just down I ninety, uh not in that area. But uh he understands he's not coming here as a sergeant if we were to hire him.
Correct.
Um, and so uh, and he's fine with that.
Yes.
Uh, and uh, but he does have some supervisory experience that I think would help him and as an officer here. Uh, he had, uh, I think he interviewed very well. Do you want to talk more about? About uh him and his um, some of the conversations you have, like with his peers or and uh talking about his strengths and such, his reviews down there?
Uh, yeah, he, he uh, he was a sergeant. He's, um, you know, currently lives in East Green Bush. Um, he is, he's got a lot of experience. I think he has eight years.
Yeah, buddy, you have.
Um, so he comes to us with a lot of experience. He's been a sergeant for the last two years. So he kind of knows both sides. Um, and he said he's okay with just going back to being regular police officer. So, um, you know, I think he'd fit in well with the group that we have now.
Um, he would come in at step three if we were to hire him, which is what Logan is, so there's no increase in salary there. So it's a, it's a basically a flat exchange. So, uh, we would like to preliminary, to hire him tonight with board approval?
Yeah, and then he would come to me forward in the next meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about Cody?
No.
He's, he's, I think he'll, he'll fit in great, so.
And it's.
I think they are both good applicants.
Yeah, and you know, we're, we're sad to see Logan go.
Yes.
I understand why he's leaving, you know?
Yes.
Probably want to be a colony now, but.
Logan has crushed it with DWIs for the village, so.
At least done thirty DWIs since he's been here.
Wow. Yeah.
In a year, in a year, yeah.
Um, but yeah, he's done a really good job for us. You know, like I said, his brother works in Colony, his brother's girlfriend works at Colony, so.
Yeah.
He, he's not leaving because of anything here.
Correct. So can I get a motion to hire Cody Bell, step three, starting?
December fourth.
December fourth. So he's, all right, thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Uh, let's see, last thing I wanted to talk about was.
High service?
High Service Reservoir and Lavelle. You got two of you here and I'm missing it, so, uh. Want to start with High Reservoir Service. So just so everyone's recapped, we kind of put a hold on the work that was going on at the High Reservoir, trying to contain some leaks there. Uh, and they discovered, take it away.
Yeah.
Hi, um, member of the board, those uh, the new, uh, new board members. I'm Ruben Hall, a senior civil engineer with, with Lavelle Associates. And uh with me is Lauren Paulson, who's been involved in that reservoir project for.
A very long.
Longer than I have. Um, yes, the background is that uh this went out to construction. Um, the summer was originally intended to be complete in August and September. Uh, ran into some delays with construction. The structure itself is a three-cell reservoir. There's cell A, cell B, cell C. Cell C is over fifty percent of the capacity and cells A and B are equal the other forty percent total. Um, the reservoir itself is probably somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred years old. Uh, the last repairs that were done of consequence were done in the uh late eighties, early nineties. And in particular, cell A, which is the one where the work is being done now. What happened when the contractor got in and got the water drained down, um, discovered that there were patches upon patches upon patches within that cell A and to the point where would not have been able to um warranty the, the finish that was, the, the sealant that was proposed to do the work that we had, we had designed. So what's in front of you now is a change order to pull all of that old patching off, um, do some uh selective removal of the concrete at the base of the tank, basically all the way around the back, the bottom, the perimeter, which is where the, the issue is. And then putting in, essentially putting in fresh concrete, tying that in, and then putting a fresh coat of the finish that ultimately is what is going to provide the sealant for, for the tank. Um, I'll let Lauren speak a little bit more about the history of how we got to where we are now, but the question has come up is that there are what, when the reason that this project is in place is leaks from, from the tank. And we had done report and there was um overwhelming evidence that the leak was coming from cell A. Tank's been drawn down and the area around cell A to what I would say if you're looking at the reservoir would be basically the front and the side um is, has, has dried out. But there's still leak, there's still water or wet spots in the back, which gives the indication that there is another source uh beyond what's being done. So what is going to happen with, with this change order that's in front of you will give the confidence that cell A will, will be brought to, to the point where the integrity of cell A will be that it will not be leaking, and that's where the substantive leak was coming from. But we still have, I want to say it appears, but I think with ninety-nine percent confidence, I'm going to say that this will not, because it's leaking, because there's water right now in the back, uh toward the back of the property, and that cell A is already all the way drawn down, that there's, that, that that water is not coming from the cell A. So there's something else going on either under, at the back of the tank or somewhere around the pump station that's adjacent to the tank. So again, I'll let Lauren, um, because Lauren's been speaking with uh DPW about what had been done previously and how to strategize what to do for the rest of this. So there's really two actions. Well, there, there's one action and one discussion that we'll have to come back to you with. The first action would be the change order. This would have needed to be done regardless of what other issues there may be out there. Um, this basically is a change order for the most part to make the repairs to the problem that has been there for years that was, again, patched multiple times. And this is to put a full clean patch on that part of, of cell A. And Lauren, if you want to stick to what's still out there.
Yeah, um, so about a year and a half ago, um, uh, the village contacted Lavelle to start looking into the reservoir uh due to some wet conditions in an adjacent property. Uh, so we hired a diver, um, who both did inspections with a remote operated vehicle as well as going into the tank itself. Um, and the inspection was all documented and basically what we found was that two of the three compartments were in good condition. And then the compartment, which is um in discussion tonight, um, had some previous repairs on it that were starting to fail. Uh, so that's how we ended up doing these repairs. Um, we found a small leak in one of the other compartments, which was repaired shortly after it was discovered. Um, and like Ruben said, we started the repairs on this compartment, hoping that it would uh alleviate the wet conditions in the adjacent property, but now with that compartment being drained, um, we're starting to think that there might be another source. Um, Mike with, uh, Mike Hagman with DPW is going to test the um water in the adjacent property to make sure that it's still coming up with chlorine. Um, if we find chlorine, it means that we're still getting water somewhere from. Um if we find chlorine, it means that we're still getting water somewhere from the drinking water system from the backyard, to, into the backyard. Um so going forward, um since the reservoir doesn't seem like the likely source of um these wet conditions, we're going to look into some piping of the water system. Uh that will likely include doing some uh CCTV, so basically a small robot that's put into a pipe. Um and goes throughout the pipe. And video records to see if we can see any uh caved pipe or any cracking or things like that. Um but regardless, um the compartment that we're working on, it was leaking uh and affecting other areas besides the adjacent property. Uh so it, so the repairs need to be done regardless, so we did lose water and uh the tank can keep functioning.
But what is in front of you with the, the proposed change order from the contractor, our construction team and Lauren, the design team have reviewed it. It's actually for the work that's being proposed, um I was actually quite surprised, it was less than I was anticipating for the uh the level of detail that they have to do, it's a little under eighty-five thousand dollars is the proposal. Um and then this would push the work out to be complete, substantially complete in mid-January and uh final completion would be done uh first week of February.
Can you just go through some of, some of that, cause it's my mistake, uh I replied to you asking those questions if you're gonna be here and I, and I, I didn't get it to the, to the board members from what you sent to me this afternoon, so can you just go through what the change from what is still to be, so there's still work to be done, correct?
Yes.
And as I understand, you're going deeper into the cracks to remove what was done before, can you just describe that?
If you would picture, it's almost like a sandwich of repairs where patches of concrete type material and rubber gaskets. And when they got in there and started really getting into what's there in the bottom, so if you picture the, the tank is a, a concrete box. Around the bottom of, the bottom square, the floor of the tank, basically, you know, similar to the baseboard of the, the room here. Um, there had been a series of patches that had been done over time, and those patches, when we got in there, it was a layer, there were multiple patches. So what the concern was, is that the finish design that we have for what was to be put in there to put a sealant in and to put a coating on it. The concern was, there's so many undulations and other materials and um separate layer, layers, like laminations of, of repairs. So all of that is coming out, so all of the old patches coming out, all of the old gasket is coming out, and then we're actually gonna be chipping out a section of concrete to make it an integral concrete finish all the way around the perimeter of that floor. And so that's what the proposal is, is to remove the concrete around the, the bottom perimeter. To install CICA lock stop, that's the gasket that goes around that um will be the infill, basically the infill of the crack. Uh also go, go into install supplemental steel reinforcing in that new concrete. And then pour the um, the finished product on it, which is a cementitious, uh another um cement product.
What would be the life expectancy after this is?
Um, that's what, that's the detail of the proposed change.
My, I don't wanna sound blip with this, but my answer would be longer than the rest of the tank. And I, I think that's, that's a, a topic for a later discussion, is looking at that tank holistically of what the overall life is, because at some point, it's seventy-five to a hundred years old, so there are, there are other things that, again, we're, we've gotta figure out where the other source is, um where, where there's coming from. Um, there starts to become a point where you may be putting, you know, good money into patches upon patches upon patches, so I think it is time to start looking at, is there another option for water storage, looking, you know, five, ten, fifteen years down the line to replace those tanks that are there? Um, that, that's, that, it's a.
I think I know where you're going with that. I know exactly.
That's, that's the long answer to the, the solution, I guess, for at least a twenty-five to thirty year life for what's gonna be put around there. Uh my concern is that the tank itself is very likely to undergo other, other problems before, before December.
Like what?
The other cells, uh again, it's a, a hundred year old tank, the valves, the piping that's within it, the way that this, these tanks are and the the pipes that are inside are exposed.
Yeah.
They're, as, as the water goes up and down, the if something is completely submerged and whether it's, you know, we're talking about steel rusting or wood rotting, if something is completely submerged or completely dry, it's less likely, but when you get water levels going up and down, that's where the damage always is. So uh we don't know, there's four valves in there that Public Works doesn't even wanna turn because they're afraid that, you know, snap them off and create problems in the others. So there, it, it's both operational maintenance and longevity, I think, and there becomes a point where maybe not in my career or the time that folks like you are sitting here on this board. Uh but there will be a time that that tank really is gonna need to be looked at holistically as to whether it's uh, that it's life.
So uh going along with that, so we're having these problems now, and you were saying you, you think you're fairly confident that cell B and cell C are, are not leaking, although they could, is there any wisdom to draining them now to see if there were similar repairs made in the eighties that maybe aren't failing as badly, but maybe starting to so that next year we're not doing the same project?
The short answer is yes, we would have to, you know, strategically figure that out, again, cell C is more than fifty percent of that capacity, so in terms of providing the water service that that it need, that's needed, we'd have to, you know, balance, we'd have to figure out how to do that.
Right.
And again, I get Lauren, you speak to what was discovered, there was an issue in C, it was patched um a year ago?
Yeah, about a year ago. Um, yeah, so the extent on which um issues were searched for in the compartment, like I said, it was a remote operated vehicle as, as well as a diver. Um, so the repairs you can see are all, are all gonna be visual, right? Um so when we were in the compartment that we're doing work in, it was very evident that there was a repair done and it was very evident that that repair was failing. Okay, um, there are other issues that can come up that you might not be able to see with your naked eye, especially with a diver that's in underwater. Uh for instance, the leak that we found in compartment, in the bigger compartment.
In C?
Yes, in C. Um, was found using dye, dye testing, so basically we suspected uh the wall penetration where the pipe leaves the tank and goes out.
Yeah.
Um, we suspected that that might be an area of leaking, so we do the dye testing, it's basically just food dye and see if the, the dye travels out of the tank. We confirmed that it was, that's the repair that we uh patched up, it was relatively small, um. So there's things like that, unfortunately with the size of the tank, you can't do dye testing everywhere. Um in order to determine every single um issue that isn't a tank, you'd have to do uh like ra, like penetrating radar and things like this.
There, there's a, there's ground penetrating radar that you can do for utilities, or something similar that you can do, that can be done for concrete and um it becomes a more.
Yeah.
Yeah, more elaborate testing that we had, had done, but that's part of why the, the strategy is what is the next step, we've, we've exhausted everything at the level that we were able to, and there's still something.
Yeah.
There's still another source.
And that's why, you know, I'm willing to, you know, again, to go along with the sending the robot down the pipes and all to see what you find, and let's hope that is where we, we find it, but um if you do have to, um if there is wisdom to draining tank C where we did have some recent repairs and there have been some issues, can we service uh what we, who we need to service with tanks, with cells A and B only, even though that's only about forty percent? This time of year before people are filling pools and watering lawns?
I, I can't give you an answer off the top of my head, I'd have to do the, I'd have to do the hydraulics.
Yeah.
I don't know, but as far as draining the tank to find repairs, I, I don't know that draining it would be um that much more beneficial to discovering any leaks.
Okay.
Uh because like I said, they're all gonna be visual. Um and basically, if you didn't really see them with the robot and with the diver, it's unlikely you're gonna find it with the tank drained. Um, but.
So some of the other options that we've been talking about is the interconnect, which we just finished with Water Elite.
Mm-hmm.
To see if, giving us one option.
Yeah.
Uh we're still talking about some of the interconnections with Colony to see, so we're trying to explore every option uh first before we sink a, a, a much more significant amount of money in the reservoir where it is, so these are things that we're doing all in concert with each other. Uh the, the change order for eighty-three thousand nine, or six, six hundred ninety-four dollars is basically just to get cell A back in uh appropriate working order. Uh a, and turn that back over on, fill that back up, get that, everything back working the way that it was. Uh curing half of the leak or a portion of the leak uh going out the front of the property, um but not at the back of the property, so.
And the valve also with that project, the valve, the valve within there has been replaced, uh so there has been other improvements as well to help the operation of it, which again has been um one of the issues is that you're just not being able to the, the fear of turning those valves and snapping something off is uh dreadful.
Well, is that replacing all of them that they are fearful of, of turning or just that?
Just the one that's the control valve that is in A, it needed to be controlled to be able to do the work, so that was replaced to be able to get the work, just to be able to do the work within the tank and isolate it.
Okay. So basically, what we need approval for is a change order to increase the scope of work as described for eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
I got a question, so one, small question. So as far as the repairs, are there seasonal limitations on the products that they're gonna use even though the, the reservoir is under, under the ground? Like the CICA sealant, is there seasonal temperature limitations in order for that to get properation in this time of the year with the ground temperatures where they are now?
Yeah, so I believe the um, the working temperature uh minimum is, is thirty-five degrees.
Is it thirty-five?
Yeah, however, um the, the compartment can be heated and they intend to do so.
That's my question.
Right.
So all that is, I think, in consideration in their change order, so we won't have any more up charges because you have to heat that area in order to be, be successful with that repair.
Yeah.
It should be heated.
Yes.
Yep.
For the concrete especially. Thank you.
Yep.
Was eighty, what was it, eighty-three?
Eighty-three.
I, I sign it, you, you should have it in your email, Don.
Eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Eighty-four cents, yes.
I move to approve the change order uh put out by Labella for uh eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay.
All those in favor? Uh, anyone opposed? Thank you.
And uh, said also, just to formalize it, the changing contract time pushes that.
Right, that's understood because.
In January.
So I will sign those changes uh tomorrow in the office. Don, if you could print, print that out for me.
I can do that.
Okay, and then you wanna talk?
Supposed to resume tomorrow as well.
Okay, great, okay. Uh and then, can you just give an update on, so Ruben, we've been working with your new guy?
Ted.
Ted.
Ted Donner.
Okay, on the sewer contract between the village and the town of Colony, that contract expired. It was a forty year contract that expired, I think, in two thousand and eleven?
Yeah.
And so was well overdue for renewal, so uh we started talking about uh putting the contract into today's terms and at today's prices. And so we were working through some arrangements with that.
Right, uh not much more to offer other than Ted Donner from my office and uh the mayor had a meeting a couple of weeks ago where we went through how, how to hold this together. And what we do, we have a draft of um a sewer use, intermunicipal agreement that we've used in other communities, and we're gonna take what was the agreement um, the prior agreement in principle and bring it into, in what I would say is twenty-first century terminology. Uh from an engineering perspective, we'll also look at what the right um approach is in terms of how to um, how to look at really three pieces of the puzzle, one is the cost, well, all having to do with cost share, one is the use of the existing of the pipe itself, the, the infrastructure that is in the village of Manans that is getting, gets served um for the town of Colony. The second is the effect uh or the contributing proportion of you, you know, the village of Manans has an obligation to the wastewater treatment plant, to the county, identifying what the colony, town of Colony's portion of that is, and then third is looking toward um capital projects and how the usage or the flows that are contributed by Colony would um, would be prorated for the idea of any capital projects that might come up in the future, and so what we would do is we'll come up with those three different buckets and a, a, a formula that yeah, would be, would be fair to both the, the town and the village, uh which is, you know, my estimation at this point, based on what was in the old agreement, is probably going to be, it's gonna help the village uh.
Oh, without a doubt.
I think they're working out like four dollars.
So just to give you an example, they, the agreement was written at four dollars per household for all of the people up, all the way up Osborne or uh, uh three seventy-eight, all the way into Loudenville. So four dollars in nineteen seventy is certainly not four dollars today. So there's, there's one thing. Uh, the second thing, looking at their list of parcels, there's a lot of vacant parcels that say vacant land that I know from real estate are not vacant land anymore. Uh and I know cause one of my clients bought one. And has a house there, and I'm sure it was not tent.
Right, and then that's part of what we'll look at is there, there's two approaches, is you can do it based on the flow calculations of what's coming through the meter. Um and then the other is looking at the individual parcels, one gets a little more nuanced in terms of what type of parcel it is, is it industrial, is it residential, how many of them there are?
Those are entirely residential.
There's a lot more minutia that goes into that. But um at the same time, if you do it based on the flow and you do a prorated contribution on, doesn't really matter how many there are upstream. You, you're, you've got X number of gallons coming per day, that, that's what we're gonna work out and again, try to try to put together the package that works best for the village of Manans as to how to monitor, maintain and prepare for, for future.
My understanding was that they were the ones providing the readings.
So they have a meter pit about where the daughters of charity is?
Yeah.
And that's where their line intersects with them, intersects with the Manans line. So what we do is where it flows out on Broadway, we have a reading. So we, we take this reading, we subtract this reading, and that's what Manans flow is, and so, so but in cost sharing, everything from where they connect on down to where it exits the plant, they should have a piece, in my opinion, of the capital cost of anything that happens to that entire piece, and so that's what we're working.
Yeah, now we're just taking into account the, the parcels that are actually on our water system that are part of.
Yeah, so those are, so they.
That's another.
There's a whole clump, and then they subtract our clump, and then we have the end result of their clump. So it's, it's, it's really.
Oh, I know, I know.
It's uh, it's really, it's, it's an interesting way to calculate.
Water circulates like this.
Yeah, and so.
Does DPW do that calculation? Well, we're on a separate, the water system is separate, our water system is separate.
Yes, so.
So we're ours is from Troy, and then the bill does it based on. There's a number of Loudenville residents that are on our water system.
Based on the, the list they survive.
Or the ones down here.
But I mean, uh, is DPW that provides them, too, are they the ones actually looking at the meters?
Uh, I don't know who reads the bottom one, but.
What purpose would it be, it would be that whole party's got to be present to read the meters, so, you know, for them to get a physical reading.
All right.
They're saying this is this. I don't wanna, you know, two parties there.
So it's a complicated formula, and it's long overdue for uh, for some revisions.
And the document will also have sections on it with regard to repairs um and how those are gonna be managed and how it will be set up as to and is there a lump sum, is there a prorated service, how does, how is the container of that part of the system going to be um, going to be tracked and um compensated?
And then the last thing is the bid for the South End project, so as I'm sure you're aware, National Grid is doing. some final gas line repair work for the streets that they didn't get to yet so that they don't bump into us. Can you just talk about where we are with bidding?
Yeah, uh, so with National Grid and others, we did uh make the advice to do a moratorium after your project is done so that any utilities that have work on the books to get that in there in those streets ahead of time or during the construction of the of the project. Uh, right now, the final documents are being uh collated to be able to send to DEC. We've addressed all of their comments. We've addressed all of the DOT comments. Um, so this, the package with the water, the wastewater and all of the construction is getting ready to go to DEC for their final sign off. Uh, we're looking at getting that in by the by the first week of December. Um, and then at the same time, we're working on um coming up with a traffic control plan for how those individual streets would be uh for lane closures or street closures. Uh, that's something that we're going to need to work out with the stakeholder management as to how we're going to um work with the neighbors, work with the individual homeowners to um to keep them informed. Um, but to do that, we have to have an idea of what that plan is going to be for the traffic control maintenance and protection of traffic. And that means both through traffic and um residents.
And buses, school buses. I I don't know what the route is down there in the South End, but let's make sure that the school bus company gets, if we can get the route from them and figure out how we can.
Yeah, um, a a quick synopsis of the traffic control plan will take into effect into account school buses, mail delivery, trash pickup, uh, you know, any, any regularly scheduled service that comes through there in addition to the the property owners themselves.
Thank you, boss.
Right, thank you, thank you.
You're up to having some. Uh, last, lastly, uh, I promise is the um Regeneron has purchased four thirty one Broadway and has applied through the Albany County IDA for some pilot relief help uh with taxes on the parcel. And after they purchased the parcel, they misunderstood how the math works. And so an initial application that they made to the school and to the village showed asked, or basically uh in its application, asked for a reduction. They're not asking for a reduction at this point on anything current. All they're asking is for some Albany County help on any additional investments they're making to that parcel, which based on the first uh on their application is a a about ten to twelve million dollars. So there was a hearing uh that is being held by the Albany County IDA here on November twenty ninth at seven P M. Uh, they're going to do a presentation, I guess, as far as what their uh, what their proposal is and what they're asking for. Uh, but the revised ask is is keeping the taxes flat from where they are currently and asking for a ten year, ten percent each year till full value of any improvements.
Where, where's the hearing to be held?
Right here.
Oh, here, oh, right here.
On the website.
I saw it, yeah. Uh, and it's going to be uh available online as well. So, um, alright, that's, that's all I have. Any trust you
You, you need um a
Oh, yeah, so hard, hold on. Uh, I thought I was, I was done that.
Adopt a highway in three seventy eight.
So uh, I put out a request on the activities for somebody to adopt. Uh, there's two streets or two highways that are available for adopt a highway. That's Van Nuys Boulevard and uh, I think section of Broadway is also available. And uh Hoffman Companies, Hoffman Car Wash is adopting Van Nuys Boulevard. The Hoffmans live on Van Nuys Boulevard between Sage Hill North and the lake. Um, so that was great of them. And then uh, the three seventy eight bridge replacement uh is uh is available for comment. Uh, we're going to link our website with DOT's uh webpage for what the uh, what the proposal is uh at least in comment form, so anybody can go there and review that. Um, so again, it's nine years out, so I think you have plenty of time. Uh, any of the board members have things they want to talk about?
Laura.
So, I mean, it's on the eleventh, uh, December eleventh, right here. I'll talk more about that on the fourth. Yeah.
The eleventh?
December eleventh.
I thought it was the fifth. I thought it's the road.
No, it's the Monday.
It's the Monday, the eleventh.
Monday, the eleventh.
Monday, the eleventh.
Yeah, because the fifth isn't even Hanukkah yet.
Alright, what do I know?
The fifth is Sunday, yeah, Monday, the eleventh. Rabbi mortified Ruben, right here, uh, five o'clock. Um, and again, I'll talk more about it at the meeting on the fourth, but I encourage all to attend. There will be gifts for all, uh, not provided by the village, provided by the rabbi and good food, uh, good songs and good times. Hope to see you all there.
Five, five thirty, right?
Yes, right here. Uh, okay, anyone else on the board?
I got one thing. Uh, the delinquent taxes were sent to Albany County for twenty twenty three.
Do we have to state the amount for the record?
We did the last statement.
We did, okay.
Yeah, we did a, we have a, they just want to let you know that.
Okay. Uh, alright, we're going to public comment. Bill, head in.
I'm Bill Garvey. I'm from five eighty seven Broadway, right here in Minneapolis. I got a few issues. Since I recommended our village board should rehire Don Hannigan to serve another four years as our village clerk, I'd like to thank the village board for rehiring Don Hannigan to serve another four years as our village clerk. He's done a good job and I've known Don Hannigan since nineteen seventy seven when I was in college, but it's thankful for doing so. Now, while walking on Manan Road back in late September, I observed one front door of white and green house of thirteen Manan Road was left open and no one was lives in that house. So I reported the problem to the Manans Police and I wish to thank Manans Police for locking the door, front door of the white and green house, Manan Road. Thanks for doing it. Now, I continue to be concerned about residential properties in here lower Manans continue to have overgrown lawns, weeds and vines. So if any property owner who fails to clear their property of weeds, high grass and vines, should not only be slapped with fines and surcharges, but also given them forty to sixty six days of community work service. Now, there's no excuse to have high, you know, overgrown lawns and farms, vines and weeds. That's, that's plenty hazards. One more thing. Now, I'm continuing to be frustrated about the Manans Little League baseball section restroom building still has not been repaired, which should have been done this past summer in the fall because New York State still hasn't released a grant money that had already been approved of because of long delays and red tape. And new, and I'm saying, you know, red tape and delays is two areas I get zero patience for. And I know Karen Stewart, you know, who's one of this project, like do, like I do, and she's just as much frustrated as I am. But we hope that during next year, this recreation project get done and we like to get this done and the early get done the better. Now, I like, now, Don, remember you, I asked you how much money, grant money did we get? You said one hundred thousand dollars?
Twenty five thousand, I think it was.
Twenty five thousand?
A hundred and twenty five thousand.
Alright. Now, I've been hearing from Karen, you know, that the village has been unable to line up contractors to get the restroom building repair work done. Uh, what, what seems to be the problem?
We don't have the money. The state has given us the money. That's their problem.
Well, I'm going to say this to state officials, that they're keep, they're having their fun and games delaying giving us the money that we had approved. And the, of course, they should not only be out the streets as unemployed public officials. You're better yet, they should be living with the unwanted dogs in Manans Doghouse. Thank you for letting me speak. By the way, Marla officially be sixty six years old.
Happy birthday, Bill.
Thank you.
Steve?
Just wondering about the multiple streetlights that are out on Broadway. I mean, it's gets dark much earlier. I know a lot of people do walk in the community and
I can address that. The uh, we're working with electricians. They changed the fuses and it didn't fix the problem. It's from when they first took out the other one. There's a problem with the wiring. They're working on it. They hopefully by the end of next week it'll be taken care of.
There's one that doesn't even have a light.
Yeah, that's on order.
Just curious. Thanks.
With, so the question is, the question is, what, um, how much money do we invest in revigorating them?
Yeah.
To replace it. And Don's fabulous contact at National Grid has gone AWOL again, uh, with street lighting guide, so.
Well, the prob, the problem is we can't find anywhere where we own the project, we own the lights. Because the state put them in, we bought the lights, but the state installed them when they did the bridge works.
Then who's maintained them?
I showed them on the, on the contract where it said that the the village will maintain them.
Yeah.
But they, they need some of those. So I have the engineers from um DOT looking to find out where, you know, the the original contract.
So they're saying we can't replace them until we can prove that they're ours?
If we replace them, it would be
No, we paid for them.
It would be nice to replace them and have National Grid take care of them like the others.
Yeah, we, we paid for them.
No, no, I know, but we had talked about getting rid of those and going back to just regular streetlights. Minimizing the number of them.
Yeah, I agree.
The thing I, the thing that I regret when we did that was that we paid for them. We chose a style and then they put something completely different and cheaper in. And we paid for it.
Nightmare for
They, and they, and they did wire them all in correctly.
They're all serious.
And then, yeah, and they've been a problem since they were installed going out.
Sorry, Steve, go ahead. Do you have anything?
No, I was just about the light.
You're, you're opening a canto first.
The channel needs to be opened. But I agree, there's too many of them. They should have spread them out. I don't know.
Yeah, it's very illuminating for a section of
They really stuck it right.
There's not many people.
Really stuck it to the wall. They could have spread them out.
Chief stuff is the good, that, that's
Alright.
Just uh, getting back to something you mentioned earlier, as far as the zoning thing on on Fusion Ward, they're zoned for a medical facility, so we had to um approve it. So it's, you know, the question is, does an OTP fit a medical facility? And that, that's one question and I, I guess the determination was made, but do you know what the certificate of occupancy is for? It's for professional offices. And I think if you take a look at the zoning, you'll discover that an OTP is not consistent with professional offices.
But that's your opinion?
Well, I mean, I guess if you look at the zoning, it seems clear to me, yes, it's my opinion. But I think others could look at it and they would draw the same conclusion.
Anything else?
Uh, just one more thing. Is, is anything happening proactively as far as uh bringing a supermarket into Manans? Is there a committee or what, what's happening with that? Anything?
I can answer that. When I first took over, I contacted every supermarket chain and some that aren't in the capital district. And they're all telling us the same thing, that there's not enough rooftops. And if you see right now
That, 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 that excuse to hold water though, because I've seen tops and I've seen shop rights in places with much lower density.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. All the shop rates just left.
Well, shop rates, and that's a thing. So with them leaving, demographic changes, I think that changes for everybody where there, there's got to be some kind of vacuum for somebody else to come back to.
They all said basically the same thing.
We don't have enough rooftop, meaning we don't, we don't have homes, houses. We've got eighteen hundred apartments.
How many, how many units of apartments?
Eighteen hundred?
Uh, so there's, there's five super, well, now there's four supermarkets within three miles of of us. And so the only one that we had any traction with was CNS Grocers and that's gone nowhere. I mean, you were at that meeting, you know, I mean, I thought, I thought we hit it off real, real well. And uh, and we never heard from them again.
We also, we also had um Honest Weight Food Co-op uh look at uh Mid City and they end up saying the exact same thing. It was, it was going to be a huge uh shot in the arm for us, but you know, unfortunately, they, they said the same thing.
Well, certainly, certainly times change, right? There was a time when I first moved here, we had three supermarkets in Manans, all public and Shop Right and Price Shop.
Yeah, we got zeros.
Now we have, now we have zero.
Think about, think about what changed, okay? We had Williams Press with thousand plus workers there. We had Albany International with thousand plus workers there. We had Montgomery Ward. Those were all very active employers during the times that those supermarkets were successful. They are left.
The main reason is seventy seven. Because right, you know, Broadway isn't being thoroughfare anymore.
Right. So it's, you know.
Look, I'm just wondering if there's, a-again, how long ago was that, Don, that you did that?
It's been, we've done, we've met with them two years ago.
Twenty twenty?
No, no, it was early last year. It was in the two year
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, thousands have tried.
Yeah.
You know, everybody in the world has tried, but they're just
I've written to the CNS Grocers. We had a great meeting right in this room and I would, from their silence, you would think that, that they all dropped off the face of the earth. I mean, uh, it's incredible.
It's frustrating.
It's absolutely frustrating.
Have they ever approached Aldi's? They seem to go into, you know, they have a smaller footprint.
Not enough, not enough traffic counts here. They go
They go
Where it's absolutely the, the nightmare traffic scenario, Central Ave, Wolf Road, you know, uh
The Zike, and then we'll tell you, I don't like going to Lathan, do shopping with all the heavy traffic.
It's on the street, that's, that's the traffic nightmare.
Right, that's what they like. This Aldi's is owned, correct me if I'm wrong, by, by the Trader Joe's.
Yes.
So Trader Joe's loves absolute traffic nightmares. Look at the one on Wolf Road.
Wolf Road, absolutely.
They love it when it's like, it's, I don't get it.
There's, I, I don't like traffic nightmares, period.
There's like a new unit has smaller runoff, but I don't know if that's
Yeah, we, at the time, I had um, I had a um economic development intern uh working with me full time on that. Um, and that was, it was, it was a huge initiative. It was great that we got as far as we did, but we kept getting roadblocks with that. Very frustrating.
Very.
So with Regeneron, how many people are going into Regeneron?
Uh, there, the, the current phase is eighty, eighty to a hundred jobs.
Eighty.
What about Bloomberg?
That's ninety jobs.
Will it be more than that afterwards or it's
Uh, not sure yet.
And we still have River View, so there's people in that building. So it just seems ironic that we have two cloud dispensaries because they're going to do ten million dollar a year because of all the traffic that they're going to have, but yet we can't get a grocery store that can get a gallon of milk other than the sewer.
But to, to that point, those are traffic counts that then go into the equation when you're a commercial broker that say that the number of cars
I mean, I don't understand why we, you know, we're still entertaining trying to get some kind of water source here. Maybe you know, a bakery or, oh, we've got safety tables.
I have a quick point. Instead of being reactive, something proactive, it's going to be our hundredth anniversary next year, which is all really exciting. I think the village signs, we might not have the money to replace them, but they're looking worn. Maybe we've got some really good painters that could kind of go in and
We talked about that the other day, so yeah.
Oh, absolutely. I just think it should be revived for a hundredth.
Yeah, they're like twenty years old now. That's
Yeah, I didn't know. I mean, we don't have the money for that. I'm just painting it.
Paint isn't helping anymore, so.
No, okay.
Absolutely. It's, it's uh, you talked about that, that's just the other
Everything has a life to them.
Okay, well, we need them replaced before our hundredth birthday.
Alright.
Just on the uh, the reservoir problem, what the engineers are trying to explain to you is that they about live their usefulness, probably in your lifetime while you're along the board, they're doing it in a gentle way. I don't know if there's grant money available because it is a freshwater holding tank for us as, as residents. If there's any state grant money out there that you could look at, and I absolutely recommend you start getting pricing on what it's going to take to have it get over up there.
Being looked at, yeah.
A major, major undertaking with phasing and staging, probably as long as when the sisters start developing, you know, the project could be that long.
And federal grants.
Talked about tonight, you know, you can send all the robots, you want in, that concrete is over a hundred years old. It's, you'll continue to have cracks and not being able to inject those walls. So I've been listening to this for years now about the reservoir and any issues that you had up there, years. Which is a comment. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. That'd be great.
At the next school board meeting, we're planning on having a public hearing about, um, school boards considering there's a new law that got passed that allows the school to give an exemption to, uh, ten percent profit tax exemption to volunteer firefighters and volunteer unemployment workers. Um, and the school's going to have a public hearing on it at the next school board meeting, which unfortunately is December eleventh, but it's six thirty, so hopefully that gives people time.
Will be done by then.
Minor, minorly to the, to the school, uh, we'd like to hear what the village thinks about it, um, before we take action on it, so. Spread the word, uh, maybe, uh, like we can communicate to school families, but maybe the village would be willing to do an effort.
Yeah, we'll put it on, uh, website as well. Can you stream those?
We do, yes.
Um. How was your, uh, your two?
Oh, great. I think we made a little over a thousand dollars, but didn't have traffic backing up my fourth lane this year, which was. Thank you.
Good and bad.
Yes.
Anyone else to public comment? Okay, we have, uh, three matters for executive session. Uh, legal, legal, personnel, contractual.
I move that we enter executive session to discuss one legal, one contractual and one personnel decision.
Second. All those in favor?
All right, anyone opposed?
All right.